Today is Thursday, July 8th, 2021. The first item on our agenda for consideration is the Director's Report from Director Lindman, an overview of things that are happening at Public Works and Utilities. He listed eight items for us. And so we have the city engineer with us. Eric is actually on vacation today. Does anyone have any questions about anything on the Director's Report? This is more of an FYI. We just place these on file, so. And in between, if we come up with questions on these items, we can contact him directly. So if there's no questions on the report, we'll place Eric's report on file. Item number two is the Consent Agenda, which includes three items. The approval of the minutes from our June 10th, 2021 meeting. Action on a stormwater maintenance agreement with WSC Properties LLC for 3701, 3805, 3815, and 3901 Stewart Avenue. And action on a stormwater maintenance agreement with Amerikan Associates for 2101 and 2105 Grand Avenue. Copies of those are also in the packets. It didn't seem that they were anything out of the ordinary. It looks like there's a staff recommendation to approve both of those. Anything anybody wants to have removed off the consent agenda to act on separately? If not, we'll take them as a group. Is there a motion to accept the consent agenda? Motion by Wadinsky, second by Neil. Further discussion? Seeing none, members in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? No one's opposed? Consent agenda is approved. Item number three is a public hearing for discussion and possible action on vacating and discontinuing an unpaved alley abutting 205 and 209 to 211 Short Street and 1202, 1210, and 1212 North Third Street. We'll open the public hearing at this time. Is anyone in attendance to discuss this particular item? Vacating and discontinuing an unpaved alley between 205 and 209 to 211 Short Street and 1202, 1210, and 1212 North Third Street? We'll ask one more time if anyone is in attendance to testify for this public hearing. Seeing no one, we will close the public hearing and then open discussion to the committee. With that, we have a map in our packets showing where the vacation would occur, and it appears that staff has no objection to vacating that alley. Is there a motion to approve the alley vacation? Motion by Neil, is there a second? Second by Larson. Further discussion or questions? Seeing none, members in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed?
Aye.
One opposed? Or everyone's aye?
Delayed aye.
Sorry, delayed aye. All right, so that passes unanimously?
Ms. Chairman, I wonder if we could move number, item number six up?
Up, certainly. Yep, we can certainly do that. And we'll let the record show also that Alder Ryan is in attendance today. And so at this point, if there's no objection from the committee, if we could move up item number six, which is discussion and possible action on cross-street sections for Washington Street and extensions of Second Street, Third Street, and Jackson Street. And these are the initial sketches for us of the infrastructure that would be put in where the mall is coming out, right? Alan, it looks like Eric had this item, but Alan's here to walk us through these drawings.
Correct. So in your packet, we have some, you know, as part of the mall coming down, we were looking at Washington Street. The first, the overview plan there shows Washington Street, which obviously exists now, the extension of Third Street south of Washington Street, Jackson Street out to Fifth, and then Second Street between Washington and Forest. So we're in the process of working with Tool Design Group, who had worked on the master plan for the downtown area, you know, about a year and a half ago. So we retained them to give us, you know, some advice and some design guidance on that. So we met with them, and we met with Mr. Gudorzy, and kind of, you know, came up, Tool came up with some preliminary design guides for the streets. Now, they have little different sections on Washington Street as compared to Second Street, Third Street, and Jackson. So I can just kind of walk through them. If you look at the...
Yep, let's start us off with Washington.
Yeah, so if you look at Washington Street, basically what was recommended in the Tool, the original plan, is kind of carried forward through here. So I think what they're designing, or what they're recommending, looking forward as like a flush street, so that there's really not a curb and gutter, raised section. There is a definition between the cars and the public, you know, the walkway area, but it's all on one level.
Okay.
So you can see it from the overhead view. There's, there is a traveled way. There'd be parking on both sides. There'd be a rather, a large, a larger than normal boulevard. They're suggesting 10 feet, and then an eight-foot walkway.
So, so no curb and gutter at all? No step-down curbs anywhere?
There'd be like almost a driveway curb that we'd probably put on the outside lanes. And that would, you know, it's basically, it'd be to carry stormwater, but it wouldn't be raised. It would be almost at the same level.
That was my question. I wasn't as concerned about conflict between people and vehicles as I was about drainage. So that, that treatment would be sufficient then without having a curb, right?
There'd be like a small valley curb almost to carry the stormwater. That, that could be worked, but it wouldn't be, you know, a six-inch raised head. It would be more like a driveway curb that would be walkable for the entire, so you'd be able to walk across that at any point. So that, you know, kind of the whis there, we'd be looking at two 11-foot lanes for 22 feet of travel, your eight feet to park your cars, the 10-foot, you know, area that could be used for trees. They're showing umbrellas that could be used for seating.
Sidewalk cafe seating or something?
Right, it could be used for several, and then an eight foot. So that would give you like a 74 effective right-of-way. They kind of wanted to point out too, they are showing like a two-foot building setback. So that would, you know, that, I guess we'd have to work on that because the, what's there existing on the north side is there. So if that two-foot setback isn't there, and...
We'd have to give a variant set for that.
Yeah, so, and, you know, on the south side, obviously, if you're planning new buildings, you could plan that two-foot setback.
But Washington Square is right to the curb already, so. Well, to the sidewalk.
To the sidewalk. So that's something we could, we'd have to work through, you know, so I, and then if we want to look at the second cross-section, the overview plan for Second Street, Third Street, and Jackson, now, it's pretty much the same. The effective right-of-way width is, remains at the 74 feet. The difference in this section is that what they're recommending is only parking on one side.
Mm-hmm.
Now, that could be, that could change sides, which side the parking is on. I don't think that would necessarily reflect on, you know, in the east or the west side, or north or south, but they'd, and then have a wider terrace on the one side. You can see the terrace on the one side is 18 feet wide.
Now, we would still handle snow in this area the same way we handle it in the rest of the bid district, right? Where they truck it out? You're not going to have snow storage in these areas, are you? For plowing? I mean, how do we handle that?
Right, I mean, it'd probably be the same as the rest of the town, town district, where we would have to, we'd bid that out now.
Right.
And it's removed by a private contractor. I would assume it would be the same here. So I guess, you know, that's where, that's, this is a starting point, open for discussion.
And these are the, these are actually the rendering of the final design. So the temporary accommodations that you'd be putting in shortly here when the mall comes down, isn't to this level, right?
Correct, right, there's, it's, it's well short of this. I mean, TJ could speak to that, but we were just adding asphalt, basically, on the...
Well, just to get them passable, basically.
Correct, to get two ways, to get two ways of traffic on Washington now. And that would just be a temporary, a temporary fix, or to get two-way traffic through there until this permanent solution can be built.
Is this a street brick?
Well, they're depicting it as brick. I guess that's something we'd have to look at. I guess, obviously, budgeting for that is, you're building a brick street on top of a concrete street. So I think they're thinking it'd be brick, and I guess that's something we'd have to decide. That's not something that has to be decided today. I guess that's something that can be brought, you know, there can be, obviously, when you're building a brick street or a paver street, you're basically building a pavers on top of concrete, so it's very expensive.
Well, and that on Fourth Street has shown itself to be a maintenance nightmare. I mean, it's, right?
There are, yeah, there are...
It's difficult to clean.
Yep, there are the different types of pavers. If you recall what we put on Second, Second Avenue on the west side of town, that's a little different paver. It's a concrete paver. That probably holds up a little better.
Is there an option for a stamped concrete surface instead?
Yes, there is.
That's cheaper and still looks good? I mean, that brick stuff is, doesn't hold up, and the salt eats it up, and, I mean, we've had trouble with that in other areas. That might be something to just make a note of when we come to try to cost this out, because we learned a lot from Fourth Street, and even from some of those inserts in those sidewalks in the River District with that. Sometimes that insert is slippery, you know, they're hard to remove snow.
Right, and so I think there are different surface treatments we can look at, whether it wants to be all concrete pavers, or brick pavers, or, you know, a combination of both, or, you know, some asphalt, some colored concrete, or stamped concrete. I think there's options out there.
You've had good success with colored and stamped in other areas that, you know, it's not as expensive, but it looks nice and it wears better, I feel like. Maybe that's, if we should look at that as an option.
So, you know, if you look at Eric's staff report, I think what we were looking at here is a path forward to, you know, from this committee to, you know, is a 10-foot boulevard wide enough to, were you looking at for cafe seating? I mean, eight feet sidewalk, do you feel comfortable with that? Do you feel, you know, I think we're recommending, or Tool's recommending, parking on both sides of Washington Street?
The businesses have asked for it. I know that, right? Because we're planning to have commerce on both sides of Washington. And so they've asked for, because downtown parking is sort of at a premium if you're not in the ramp, the, some of the adjacent businesses have asked to have parking once that opens up again and isn't just that one lane business happening there. And I think that based on the plan, you know, a lot of them down there would like to, there's probably more that would like to have that sidewalk seating, you know, where they depict the umbrellas and whatnot, if there's, you know, public spaces where they want to have seating for people to either rest or eat. That, that design amenity certainly makes sense.
So how this will be used is, it'll obviously be used to figure out the right-of-way that needs to be dedicated back to the city to build these streets. So if we feel a wider boulevard section, or a wider sidewalk, or a wider street is necessary, more right-of-way would need to be dedicated back to the city to build that. So, I mean, typical, you know, right-of-way in a street is 60 feet, sometimes 66. So 74 is wider than normal. But it allows us to build the sections like we're showing here.
Well, and it does offer a lot of, I guess I would call it amenity space, where you have the seating areas, and you've got some landscape areas to really make that area attractive, but still maintaining two-way traffic that travels at a low speed. I mean, we certainly don't want to overbuild the street part. We've had, you know, issues in other areas with overbuilt travel lane size and things where it's actually conducive to other traffic issues. So I think, you know, the way we've got it set up with two lanes with the parking and that certainly makes sense. How much right-of-way do we own out there right now? That's not part of the mall, on Washington, that current? Is that 30?
It's not real wide. I don't know the exact dimension, but I think it's like, it may be only 30-some feet, because there's only one, one lane of travel there. It is narrower. But, you know, we, right now, there's no right-of-way for Third Street, Jackson Street, or Second Street. That would all have to be dedicated back to the city.
Has WASZ seen these plans?
Mr. Gudorzy is here to speak on that.
Do you have input on these plans at all, Mr. Gudorzy? On the, at least on these initial renderings?
Thank you.
Now is the time.
Now's the time. You know, it's our second meeting with Tool. I mean, the way Eric and Alan, and the staff has been approaching it, I think is a really good start. WASZ's position is essentially that we have one opportunity to do something really special in this area. And so when we're talking about going from 60 or 66 feet up to 74, or maybe even a little bit more, I think it'd be WASZ's position to collaborate in terms of making those streets really pedestrian-friendly and very nice. So I think our goals are the same. Our goals are that, you know, that we, we do something really nice in this area, that we, we look at how the street can not only serve the, the general walking public, but also how it would access the buildings. So I think we're on the right trail. I think Tool is providing good information. And I think how it ties in with Forest and Fifth and some of the other plans are important to the entire development there, so.
That's good to know, because that always is our first question, is given the fact that we have to have some of that right-of-way deeded back to us, whether or not they thought the amount was appropriate or excessive is important for us to know. The fact that we have some shared goals and, and interest in constructing this, this way. Now, with this flush street design where we've got transition, but we don't have curbs and whatnot, do we anticipate any conflict here between, you know, bicycles and cars at all? I mean, we've, we've got a lot of great pedestrian accommodations, but are we okay with the bike accommodations here as well?
We did discuss that, and it, kind of, the concept does not show a dedicated bike lane. With the low speeds in this area, it was felt that, you know, it'd be more of a share. If the bikes are, they would just share the road with the, with the motorists. Given that, you know, we anticipate this, because it is a, you know, a level street or a slow, anticipated slow-speed area, that the bikes would just share the road with the motorists.
Well, and as long as the travel lanes are wide enough, that's traditionally the way it's always been, that really shouldn't be too much of a problem. You know, it's not like it's a collector's street or anything, but just trying to foresee that in the meantime. Anything, committee members' thoughts? Go ahead, Deb.
I guess I had a number of questions. Mr. Gudorzy, I would imagine, you know, with the buildings being new, are you going to be able to have underground moving trucks being able to access from underground, or they're going to have to park on street level? Or regular type of, you know, beer trucks?
Right.
Soft drinks and, you know, if, if you have a big enough drive to be able to do that underneath, that would be great, but the big trucks.
Well, they are, and it's a good question, because I think part of a plan is how you take care of deliveries, and how you take care of maybe even pickups to some of the restaurants and so forth. How, how do you take care of your bus traffic? And so I think all of those things are very important to the discussion as to how we're going to handle them. Underground is probably not the way. It's foreseen that we'll have underground parking on Block 4, Block 5, and Block 3. And obviously, on Block 1 and 2, we have the underground parking already with, with the Pennies ramp. But it is a good question, and it's important that we handle that appropriately.
That's, that's actually a good question, because, you know, given that, then, if we have a need for vehicles that are loading and unloading, you know, to get in and get out of the way, do we have enough right-of-way dedicated in those parking lanes that we could establish a reasonably-sized loading zone? You know, or...
Well, and two for businesses. I mean, I understand you might have a lot more oversized vehicles that would be parking on, say, the, the south side of Washington, or on, you know, Jefferson, per se, but I think we need to plan that there's going to be adequate places and stalls available that would fit those sized trucks. And then, I guess I was going to ask too, are we planning on just stop and go, or it will be any stoplights? Because I do think with, with us having a large disabled population visually or hearing impaired, it would be nice to have those hearing...
Audible beacons?
Audible beeping at those cross-sections. But I don't know if you're planning on, what do you plan on doing? Is it going to be four-way stop, or is it going to be stoplights? Or what, what is the plan?
We, to be honest with you, we haven't delved into it that far yet. It's a good question. I don't, I don't foresee any additional stoplights here. I would have assumed it would just be stop control. Now, obviously, Washington's, I think Second Street would be your stops. Your minor streets are typically your stops. I would assume that Washington Street would be your through movement.
Well, and where we have stoplights downtown now, we have them as traffic approaches, comes off and onto Scott Street mainly, you know, within the downtown, at, you know, First, Second, Third, Fourth, and whatnot. But the other, the other ones are sign-controlled. But one of the communications that we got from somebody when we talked about those audible beacons, we were looking at them for Second and Scott, was that with the height of the building, sometimes that sound reflects in an odd way, and it's actually confusing for the person. You know, because that is kind of a sound tunnel through there if the buildings are tall enough. You know, I think we'd have to look and see what it's conducive to use there for pedestrian treatments.
But especially because this will be encouraging people, or people wanting to come from the bus and, and walking, and may have disabilities, and that it's a new section. I don't know if there's some kind of under, built into the road, a way to have an audible that may not bounce off the buildings as much? I mean, I, I don't know enough about that, but I do think Midstate Independent Living and then NTC Disability Center, which is probably the greatest in the state, that we're, we're really a landmark for, for technical college in that field. So we do attract a lot of people. And to make sure that, how, what would be the best practices, especially because this is a new road, and because it is close to where the bus station is, and then the concern about if this is completely flat, is this going to be a problem for people that are used to dealing with curbs and not knowing where things are? And we basically have a blank slate right now, where we could look at those issues and build it in, to make it better so that it's safer, because you don't want anybody, you know, walking on the edge of the sidewalk and end up in the middle of the street and not know they're in the street. They're just thinking, you know, is this a continuation of sidewalk and that? And I think NTC has been used in the past for new software, even before it's been sold to the public. So to get input from people with disabilities. So I think we should try to take advantage and try to do the best use of the technology while, while we're doing the streets anyways.
Do we have the ability to draw this section in 3D so we can see what it looks like at a street view? You know, like what somebody sees when they're at the corner?
Because I think that's important. I did, I just, a little off-topic, Tom Killian did tell me that with the way the Wednesday dinners were going, that there was a number of people that were in the traffic lane because they, they couldn't figure out how to get around the different restaurants that were set up. And we, we don't want to have that as an ongoing issue.
Walking or driving?
Walking.
Okay. Okay, so, and that can be managed as part of the event permit as well, as far as what streets are closed and what direction exists there. But, you know, this, from a design standpoint, I think we're, we're on the right track. I think as far as the individual amenities and the individual clearances, you know, we certainly can work with, work with our partners on that as well.
Well, I just thought with, when you look at the trucks, the service trucks that were, or moving trucks, you're looking at larger trucks that may be taking up the regular passenger lanes. But is that, is that really adequate if they have to be used for a few hours? Is it really the same width? Or, you know, you open your door for the moving truck, you know, you're blocking the traffic line?
Well, and I think one of the things we want to create is a decent loading zone where it's safe to load and unload. But I also think we should create an environment where it's not necessarily conducive for vehicles of that size and weight to occupy that space for an extended period of time. You know, I mean, you, if they're loading and unloading, or packing and unpacking, that's, and getting deliveries to businesses, that's different. But, you know, I also think that it needs to be clear that vehicles of that size and weight need to perform that task and then move out of that area, so that everything else can flow. I am concerned about making sure that we have the right accommodations for bikes and buses, because we're encouraging alternative transportation modes, and we need to make sure that they can get through there and stop effectively without creating a bottleneck. Go ahead, Alan.
Yeah, I think we're really not to a point yet to, you know, designate drop-off areas or loading zones and such, but, I mean, as the, as the development occurs and the, and the, you know, this moves forward, we can definitely work with WASZ to develop where we'd want those loading zones. I think there's flexibility in this, you know, where you could remove the parking in certain areas, or, you know, decrease the boulevard width in a certain area to, to accommodate the loading and unloading zones that were necessary.
To create maybe a bump-in type situation?
Correct.
We've done that in other areas down there, too. Okay.
I also wanted to mention with talking on transit, we, we do have the ability to have a number of new shelters put around the city, and I don't know if you would want to consider this an area to have shelters in this area. I'm also wanting to propose a kind of a post with metal, with kind of open grate, where you could have two seats on the post for the bus stop, so if some people need to sit to wait for the bus.
Oh.
That, that might be an option, but we do have quite a large budget for shelters, and I think we only have like six at this time, so...
So to make sure that we can accommodate wherever the bus stop is in these areas to make sure that we have enough land to accommodate...
If, if you want to go in that direction. I'm just wanting to let you know, but we are starting to discuss that.
As long as we have enough area in where these amenities are shown, that we could maybe intermix that stuff, that's the key. I guess at this point, since we're looking kind of at the, your view from 10,000 feet, we're not quite to the traffic control part yet. What, we can agree by consensus, I guess, to direct you. Is the sidewalk width the only concern you have today for us to narrow down? Or did you, are you looking for guidance from us on other things that we want to see? I know that in your recommendation, you mentioned the sidewalk specifically.
Right, and I guess just the general concept, you know, the general feel of what this is going to be moving ahead. And I guess another thing is the consideration of, you know, two-way parking on Washington, and then looking at one-way, or excuse me, one-side parking on...
On the others?
On the other side. You know, I guess there's flexibility with it, because even, you know, with that, with that 18-foot area, boulevard area that's shown on, you know, they're both a 74-foot right-of-way. So I guess there's the flexibility that if we feel that that 18-foot boulevard is not needed on the one side, and, you know, we needed to make a drop-off, or we needed to put parking in a little area, you know, that gives room to do that, it gives a flexibility.
Yep, I like reserving those options for us. So I think that this cross-section, this width, you know, I think when we get further into the design, you can kind of figure out what sits where, you know, and if you have to maybe alternate that stuff between sides, depending on what is locating there. I think making sure that we have enough width is the main, main key. 74 seems like a lot, but once you pack everything in there, it's really not. So I, I like the idea of the 74. I like the idea also of parking on one side of the street on Second, Third, and Jackson for now, because we want those to flow real well, because they really are circulating in, you know, what is about to be half of a residential area. But I do think we need the two-sided parking on Washington, for sure. We've already had businesses within Washington Square asking for places for people to park and increased capacity for, you know, outside seating and dining and things. So definitely two-sided on Washington. I think that is absolutely necessary. Committee members, other thoughts? Tom?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. I'm a little concerned about sort of the plaza-type nature of this setup, you know, with all the curbless, you know, all same level, from pedestrian to seated, to, you know, parking, to traffic. That seems, you know, kind of wide open and almost like, you know, I'm in Rome or something in terms of, you know, where, where's the street, you know, where do the mopeds go? So I, one thing though, that the two-sided parking, which I'm not really a big fan of, just in terms of congestion and, you know, relying, or focusing on cars a lot, but at least to me, it seems like the parked cars form sort of a protection against, you know, traffic and pedestrians and diners and that sort of thing. So that is one thing. You know, we're looking at a, a small cross-section here, but we're not looking at it as a holistic, full-length-of-the-street-type consideration, because, you know, if you look at Washington Street, it very well may be that you have an opportunity for bump-outs, you know... you have an opportunity for bump-outs, you know, where it seems like some relief. You know, you lose two or three parking spaces, but you get a bump-out for more of a park-like feel, that sort of thing, the addition of some bollards or whatever. So, I'd really like to, you know, consider, you know, when we can, you know, the whole street, you know, from a strategic standpoint, you know? And I know we don't really know what's going to go on the south side specifically in all cases, but we can kind of like plan ahead and have sort of a shiftable model to where, you know, yeah, there could be bump-outs on either side of the street to accommodate things, you know, like more park-like atmosphere and that sort of thing. So, just seeing some of those options, how they might be used, you know, in the whole street. It might be nice for us, because I'd like to see flexibility and a sort of an organic feel to this rather than just one straight line, and that's the way it is.
Considering we have five blocks of it to build, basically, would it be possible, I guess, assuming that we agree that we like the 74-foot width? And, you know, how we use that 74-foot width, we can always narrow down. Would it be possible for us to create a rendering of which, more of a cross-section that kind of shows also overlaid on top of this, a bit of a landscape plan? So, you can kind of see where your seating areas would be in relation to cars? You know, where your crosswalks would be in relation to these seating areas and where these umbrellas are? Can we, can we render that out on our?
Right, we can, I mean, we.
So, show us an overhead basically from Fifth to First? And kind of just show us what Washington might look like overhead with 74 feet cut through? And then, you know, intermingle these amenities that we are proposing in there so that they can kind of see how that stacks up?
Right, we can do a more detailed design analysis or some renderings for you guys. This was, you know, we don't want to get too far ahead and put a lot of money and time into it until we get some kind of a buy-in from this group, obviously. But as we move along, we can provide, if you look at the overview plan for like Washington Street, they do show some bump-outs at Third and at Fourth. So, we, you know, we do plan on bringing bump-outs in there too. This was just to show you a general idea.
That's to shorten the crosswalk, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
So, those can all be added, and we can look at the general view, you know? So, there will, there'll be more kicks at the cat, I guess, as you, you know, as we move forward here. This isn't by any means a final straight-through design that we're going to have.
As we look at our, you know, just our initial comments, I think that it's certainly not our goal to do less. You know, I think the concerns that we've heard tonight is make sure we have enough land for everything. Make sure we have enough space for everything so that stuff isn't unable to sit in there and unable to get in there and park and function and be seated and whatever needs to happen so that we can minimize conflict between transportation and users on foot. Lou?
Then perhaps we should find out exactly how much land we're going to have first before we move forward.
Well, it sounds like whatever we need for the plan, WASD will deed over. So, before they build anything, this, we have to decide how much land we need from them, because we only have maybe 30-something feet now. So, we need at least that, probably half that again. But, you know, if we're happy with the 74, we could expect that we'd get at least that from WASD.
Okay.
You know, and if we, if we decide that we would need 10 more feet, we need to tell them now before they start to do that. So, what do you guys think on the 74?
Well, would it be out of line to ask for that extra 10 feet? And if we don't need it, they can have it back? I mean, I don't know how that goes, but I mean.
Well, we don't know that it's 10, but.
Better to have enough than not, you know, more than, than not enough to start out with.
I guess, once they deed it over, it'd be hard to give it back. I mean, we, and then it'd be hard for them. I mean, I think, you know, a foot or two or more, but I don't know if we want to say 10 feet of space that we just don't know what we're going to do with. I mean, I think, you know, they're willing to give a few more feet or whatever, but.
If we have room for tables, trees, landscaping, seating, you know, like what we see in this drawing on this third page here, where we can see even these little seating areas are being put in there where we've got some room. We don't want to, we don't want to overbuild it, because then if you create situations where you have real wide spot where boulevards would be, you get some awkward look in there too, where it looks like unused space, like it's underutilized space. So, I think we have to be sensitive with our design, that we use that space so that it looks purposeful and not just like extra concrete or extra pavers with nothing happening. So, you know, I guess if our initial design, if we're satisfied that we can get what we need out of 74 is the question.
Madam Chair?
Go ahead.
If I may, I'd be interested in Mr. Gudorzi's opinion on this. I'm kind of intrigued on, with Mr. Larson's position there of maybe, you know, finding some more foot, some more feet to the south there. And then playing with it, you know, to see what we might come up with in terms of, again, more pedestrian engagement, more park feel, you know, more greenery, more landscaping, you know, more seating, all that sort of thing. So, again, we're not just simply looking at a straight shot. Everything is just a uniform, single line and et cetera. Would you see any value from a developer's standpoint and, and, you know, selling to another, you know, party the idea of, you know, your, your proposed building or whatnot could be adjacent to this proposed public area that has, you know, these features and amenities and whatnot, to give it more of a feel of quality of life than, you know, just being on a street?
Well, I think, I think in terms of wanting to make these streets warm and usable and wide enough, I think, I think we're on the same page there. You know, when you're looking at 74 feet and then you look at another two feet of setback, you know, it does create a pretty nice width in the sidewalk. You know, maybe that sidewalk goes up from eight to 10 in some areas. And I, you know, from what I hear, I mean, that's plenty of distance in terms of people being able to walk side-by-side and, and feel good about that transition area. I mean, the points you're bringing up, I think, are, are important. I think they can be built in. I don't think we want to give up more land than what we need to. I mean, in the agreement, we're talking about 95,000 square feet. We're probably, probably going to add another 20,000 in terms of deeding it over.
Yep.
If you look at Third Street, you know, and you look at the east side of Third Street, you know, that'll be a retail side. It'll have some access to the multifamily. But then when you look at the west side, the west side will really open up mid-block. I mean, you're going to be into this green forum. And so, there's going to be a very wide feeling there on Third Street that'll lead itself to the pedestrian spiral transition area. That'll go down to, you know, the riverfront. So, I think there's plenty of opportunity to gain what you're, what you're seeing in terms of Third Street. I think in terms of Washington Street, you know, I think, I think the two-sided parking may be a little bit wider in terms of that sidewalk on Washington. But, but I think we need to get to that. We can't, we can't, we can't ebb and flow on a dimension, because we have to put CSM together and we have to give X by Y's that people can develop in. And so, when we get to designing, say for instance Block Four, we need to know how many, how many feet we have to design in. And if we're taking some units out or we're adjusting the space in between Block Four or Five, not a big deal. So, I, I'm just sensitive that, you know, 74 to 78 maybe, somewhere in there, should, I think, give us plenty of opportunity. Jackson, Jackson, you know, the home store actually protrudes out. Jackson is going to have perhaps a little bit of a curve in it. And so, Jackson will have plenty of opportunity for, you know, a nice wide street. I see Jackson on, on the south side as being really friendly so that people coming out of the parking structure will get a real sense to wanting to transition to Third Street. You know, not to cut across, you know, the, between Four and Five, but rather to come down Third Street where they can engage in the retail, engage in the forum area, engage in this new front that we'll have on Home. You know, so, I, I think we're going to make it with that. And I would agree, I think, once we start looking at some 3Ds of this area and looking at the entire plan and how it even interfaces with Forest and First or Fifth, I think is important.
What is the standard sidewalk width, four?
Five to six.
Five to six, okay, so we'd be three feet more than that even. That's, that's a decent-sized sidewalk.
Yeah.
Mr. Gudorzi, you know, conceivably, talking on the south side of Washington, you know, not necessarily, is any given structure going to be built right, you know, up to that two-foot, you know, setback? You know, I mean, there could be any kind of apron around a building, a patio, you know, something of that sort, depending on who wants to put what where. So, I, I just imagine that going forward, as you speak to potential, you know, partners and developers, that this discussion would be had in terms of.
Absolutely.
Do we want to, you know, come all the way up to that, you know, and create a canyon? Or do we want to have, you know, those, you know, it's used to be organic, kind of, you know, park-like, you know, creativeness in what's being put there? To, to keep focusing on who's walking downtown?
Yeah, yeah, absolutely, especially east of Third Street. You know, west, we have a ramp entrance that we need to deal with. We had a little narrower spot there. So, when you come up on Building Three, I mean, that's a tremendous opportunity there to create some additional space, a transitional area that could maybe connect to even Building Two, much as you see that ramp right now to Penny's and maybe some areas up in there.
You know, I've seen some great renderings, you know, of the vision all along here, and I wonder if going forward, you know, we can see some of those applied to, you know, proposed street silhouettes, you know? To, again, address vision, you know, with potential developers and whatnot. You know, it's not necessarily cast in stone, but it's a what-if.
Yeah. I think we're on the same page.
So, as a committee, what if we would direct staff to tentatively plan for that 74 and then expand the rendering for us, either for the next meeting or the meeting thereafter, to show us a little more of what that would look like if you saw a couple blocks of it laid out so that you could see kind of how that sits?
Lisa, I was just going to say, I, I think we need to get one rendering with bicycle lanes and one without, just so we have a better idea. Because I think for all that we're doing about bicycles, to not have it laying in here, we might get a lot of complaints as well. And then, I guess with the sidewalk being at the same level of the street, I recently was at my banquet, Associated, on 24th Avenue, when a senior went through the front glass. They had.
Oh, yeah.
He thought he was going in reverse. He ended up in the middle of the, near the tellers. He went 20 feet within their building, not just, not just past the front doors. So, I'm a little bit concerned, is there, you know, having some of those posts, you know, tubular posts or something filled with concrete that are around some state or county buildings as a way to make sure people don't go past a certain area and just assume, okay, this is additional parking or I can double park?
Yes, Tool, walk us through, I guess, the benefit to the flat design, flush design versus a curb-and-gutter design, other than the cost of the curb? I mean, is there logistical benefits to going to this new format? Because we don't have it anywhere else in town, really.
Right, so, what Tool was kind of laying it out as, it is a more pedestrian-friendly, because, you know, people can cross the street in different areas. Or, if for some reason we wanted to close the block off and have a block party, there wouldn't be curbs for people to walk over. So, you could close down areas and make it like a, I don't know, they were talking possibly a farm, you know, any kind of event you wanted to have that we now have on these other blocks. If you can imagine we had it here and people wouldn't have to hop over curbs to get around. It also makes it more friendly for just people walking, you know? It's slow, I think it slows traffic down too, if you have, you know, pedestrians intermingling. Now, I know that sounds kind of counterproductive, but, I mean, to, to the, you know, we could, they did show us some pictures of some renderings for us where there were some bollards. If there are sensitive areas like around a curve that you need to make sure people stay on that curve, you could put some bollards, and you could put lighted bollards in. I mean, there's a lot of different, or you could line, you know, put intermittent, where you didn't have trees between your planters, you could put some bollards, so.
Sure. Okay.
It is a different design. It's, it's a concept that, you know, is, they gave some different examples of different states and different cities it's in. I don't remember, we could bring some, we could bring some pictures back to some different cities that they said it's in.
I would like to see some bigger, bigger views of it, more than just the snapshot here. Yep, Jim, go ahead.
I think this is all great discussion and great ideas, but I'm under the impression that right now, we just have to choose the right-of-way width. That's our main goal today, and whether the flat is the way we want to go and no curbless.
And even curbless doesn't have to be decided at this point, to be honest with you. I think the main objective of this is to, to show you what a cross-section would look like with 74 feet.
So, I know we're going to have much more discussion on this when we get to it. And I would even like to see more than one rendering of what we were planning. You know, maybe get two or three ideas of what's possible to make it friendly for everyone to get down there and have a great time. So, I would move that we go with the 74-foot right-of-way and be, and have a positive comment on the flat rendering.
Okay. Okay, do we have a second then for Jim's motion to approve the 74 feet with the understanding that we'll have some additional renderings of how that space is divided up? Is that a second?
I'll second.
Okay, second by Neil?
If I could add a comment though. Mr. Gudorzi did mention a, at least an openness to consider the extra two feet to go to the, well, two feet wider. I'd sure like to, you know, have that in my back pocket.
I would like to know, probably for our next meeting, so that we're not holding them up, if we even need that. So, if we could try to put together a rendering of this, you know, whether we do it or whether Tool does it, to show us how this kind of lays out so we know if we need any more land deeded over or not? Because if we determine that all the stuff that we like in this Tool plan lays out in the 74, then we should allow them to maximize their developable and marketable land and not take more than we need. So, can we find that out for our?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I don't like the idea of having no curb, to be perfectly honest with you. I, I think that, you know, not only do you need a curb for drainage, but I just think for safety for the pedestrians, I, I think that you've got curb all the way around downtown to start going curbless, especially in an area where you're going to promote pedestrians. I don't like it, and I won't go for it, thank you.
I would like to see us draw it both ways, honestly. Because, you know, Lou is right, we don't have this anywhere else in town, and this is new to everybody. And for as much as curbs present an inconvenience for people who are, you know, visually impaired or who are, you know, physically, you know, less capable of navigating them, they are the norm, and that's what people are used to. So, even when you see people who have, you know, even, I'll use visual impairments, they're used to feeling for that curb and looking for that curb as they navigate. And when there isn't one.
Exactly, and not only that, you, at your intersections, you're still going to have your curbless walkways so they can get up and down for wheelchairs and what's.
Well, and when we look at also snow removal, I mean, when you have to plow an area or clear an area, keeping to that curb, that's the edge. That's where, that's what they use as the guideline. So, go ahead, Alan.
I think there would be a definition for the. I, I think there, there would be a definition for the curb, so I think if we put, say we go with a stamped colored concrete for the road, the right-of-way, the curb would still be there, but it just wouldn't have a raised head in the back. So there would be the differentiation just from looking at it. You would see that. And when you come to the crosswalks on the streets, we would still have the truncated domes to, to find the-
I would have to see a rendering of it first before-
Yeah, I think, you know, one way, in, in Deb's neighborhood, Second Avenue, the first intersection there where there's those four watt rocks that you walk through, that's a raised intersection, so that is all flat, flat curbs all the way around it. If you wanted to drive that and look at how those flat curbs look around, that's the way this whole thing would look. So there is an example in Wausau that's called a plateaued intersection, or a, you know-
Tabletop.
Tabletop intersection. So that tabletop intersection would basically be on the entire lane. So if you wanted to look at that to get an example, but we can absolutely provide some better renderings.
Let's, yeah, let's do that, because we'll have the understanding that, for now, that we are supportive of the 74 feet, but that we would like to see some, I guess, broader drawings of how it all lays out before we decide on the curb versus no curb option and what amenities sit where. I guess that's a future decision. So we've got a motion and a second. Do we have additional comments, Deb? Go ahead.
I guess I'm just, I'm not ready to make a decision about the width yet. I just feel like we need some other input, and I do think we should be planning and to have a bicycle in both directions. So I don't know, is that three or four feet each side, then? Alan?
Actually, to have a dedicated bike lane, you'd need five feet, so that, that would add 10 feet to the, to the overall width, if you want, five feet of bicycle accommodations and, or bike lane in each direction.
I guess I'm just worried if, if we're, if we're doing this and then we're not including that, are we going to end up having some people just go ahead and go up on the sidewalk and go in and out of crowds and that?
Well-
And, and end up being another issue. So I think it's important to make enough time to really look at these other options and seeing and getting feedback from other bicyclists.
Part of the situation we have with the River District area is that there's an ordinance about wheeled vehicles on the sidewalk, and so those things are prohibited, I believe, down there. So we had problems on Third Street where people would come out of a store and whoosh, there goes a bike or a scooter or whatever. Those people, though, are in violation when they're doing it, and that area is signed that those, those things are to be in the street. So, you know, I think we manage that through our, through our ordinances for how we control that, if it's going to function similar. You know, I guess the concern that I would have, the only concern I would have with bike lanes is that we don't have them on any other low-flow street down there, so this would be the only couple. So Third Street, everywhere else, I mean, when you take Third Street north of Washington, and there, there isn't anything like that. And so none of the other downtown streets that are low speed have those accommodations, they're all shared lane.
I thought on Scott Street, we-
Well, Scott is different, it's a, it's a connector. I'm thinking about like Third, Third, Second, Fourth, you know, your smaller low-flow streets. The, the right-of-way is wide enough that the bikes stay to the side, but they're technically sharing the, sharing, right?
Right, so we talked about this in, with Tool and, and with the engineering and planning, and if you drive Third Street to the, you know, to the north, which I'm sure you all have, it's very slow, you've got people backing out, you have a lot of pedestrians, you have, so, I mean, the average speed is probably 10 miles an hour, so, you know, we do have those marked with sharos as a shared bike, so the bikes can easily travel that speed with. So I think the, the thought was here that this would be the same speed corridor, a slow-speed corridor, because we would have bumpouts at the intersections, you're going to have stop signs, you're going to have the pedestrian amenities. So I think the, the relative speed of the cars is why we were thinking that bike lanes weren't necessary, that, you know, the bikes could flow with the, with the vehicles, share the road. And, and like Lisa said, it, it's not on other streets downtown, so that's why we felt that that was appropriate.
Right now, it's only on Fifth and Scott, right? Fifth, Sixth and Scott, maybe, or Fifth and Scott?
Fifth, Fifth Street and, and Scott Street do have, and then, you know, Scott Street continues into Stewart all the way out.
I guess I just wanted to make a point, I swim at the Y, so it happens, because I do swim there later in the day, they had, they were out, maybe a month or two ago, with their pedal, what is it, kind of like Shanghai-type of seating, you know, that the bicycle in the back-
Oh, with the seating with the bike, like the little, like rickshaw-type-
Yeah, right, yeah.
Vehicle they have, yep, yep.
Yeah, so they, they were out practicing with them, so I'm just thinking, I could see where they could be potentially used in this area, and then especially if, if it, if it ends up, the curves continue up going towards the river, and there's a number of older people that can't walk that far, I can see where this could end up being a vehicle as this part of traffic in that area.
Okay.
And then where would that fit in?
So I guess to get us somewhere tonight, do we, are, are we willing to commit to the 74 and then design within the 74, or do you want better renderings for the August meeting? And we can make this decision then?
I would prefer to see better renderings, because it's, I can't really, I can't really decide. I'm worried that we're going to be too, too condensed and-
We know we don't want less than 74, but I'm also worried about taking land from Wausau that we don't need, so maybe we're-
We have a motion and a second?
We, we do, but we, if we're to a point where we don't want to decide on any of this without more drawings, I would ask if we want to withdraw that.
I would withdraw my second.
Okay, do we want to withdraw the motion and then hold off until we can see more next month? Does that create an unnecessary delay with the progress of what we've got working on down there?
I would ask Mr. Gudorzy, I know there's a timeline-
I know there's still a demo mode right now, but-
No, there's, there's a, there's a timeline in the developers' agreement to dedicate the right-of-way, which is kind of driving this, too.
Right, and, and I, I really don't think there's any urgency-
Okay.
You know, to making a decision. To Alan's point, in, in the amendment, 90 days after the completion of the project, it's required that Wausau deed over the right-aways. However, the way the project is now going, as a bit of an update, we, we've been working with the DNR, and we've done our soil tests, and right now, a plan for store-mater management is becoming difficult in terms of not having street designs and et cetera to go, go from. So it's kind of illogical right now that we would remove the, the slab.
Mm-hmm.
The DNR is also looking at that as being a capped scenario, which, which again gives us more time, because-
Sure.
The 90 days will not be an absolute. We have an opportunity to adjust that, to make this right. So, so I, I think we have enough time. I, I think we can look at, you know, 74, how does 76 work, how does 78 work, you know, in different areas and so forth, so.
So can you get with Tool, Alan, in the next month, before our next meeting, and lay out those couple different options?
Yeah, we can, we have, I mean, we have Tool under contract, and I think it may be helpful at, at our next SISAM meeting, maybe that they could be on Zoom call or something, you know, to, to help us better understand some of their designs, so.
That would help.
But we, we can, we can help, Deb, excuse me, have better renderings and better look at, and we could, you know, I would suggest that they would be here and speak through their design, too.
If they can be here, that would be helpful, because then we can get some design input from them, because obviously they do this all the time, and we're, you know, dependent on their knowledge from not only these drawings, but things that they've seen succeed in other areas, since they did our plan for us. So, you know, I would like us, though, to be, have enough to make a decision, hopefully at our August meeting. I don't want to hold this off for four months, though. Deb?
I was going to ask, Alan, for some of these other designs that you were taking for the, having the flat surface, are some of them, you know, in, in the colder climate? So I guess I, I'm not worried about the warm climate issues of comparable cities, but I would prefer to see ones that are, you know, kind of in snow country, most of this, most of the winter, and ice.
They did give scenarios, I believe it was Washington State, there were some, but, right, we could, we can, we can actually look at those pictures from those other cities, too, and, you know, maybe we can make some calls, too, to some city officials in those cities and just ask them how they're functioning to give a better input to this committee.
That helps, and then I think if we have a larger drawing that over, overlays kind of how things would stack up within that 74, then I think we know if we need a little more than 74, or if we're good with that. So I guess let's set a goal as a committee that we'll certainly try to make a decision on the width of the right-of-way and the sidewalk next month, if we get that, get some better info. Are we all good with that? Okay, let's do that. So we'll hold action on item number six till our next meeting, pending some additional information. That brings us back to the order of our agenda, which is item number four, discussion of possible action on parking restrictions on 10th Street, Town Line Road to Bridge Street.
Madam Chair?
Uh, yes.
I would propose accepting the, the staff recommendation.
Okay, yep, and let me just switch it up here. Yep, they recommend installing as depicted on the map, so we've got a motion to approve.
Second.
Second from Wadinsky. Further discussion or questions? Seeing none, members in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None are opposed, that motion carries. Item number five is discussion of possible action on 72nd Avenue Business Campus Trail, memorandum of agreement revision. And you'll see that we've got that, that's recommended for approval, and that is the revision that we have here, right, TJ, with the-
Nope, this is a, a different one, this is, that was for, in the consent agenda.
Okay.
So this was approved at the May meeting.
Yes.
But once we sent this back to WISDOT, they had additional staff look it over, and they wanted to add some additional language.
Okay.
As you can see, it's pretty minor, it's just identifying markings as well as signs, and then-
Okay.
Relatively very minor changes.
Sure.
We recommend approval.
Pavement markage signage, okay. Do we have, then, a motion to approve the-
I'll make that motion.
Revisions? Motion by Larson, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Wadinsky. Members in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None are opposed, that motion carries as well. And so that took us very quickly to the end of our agenda. Item number seven is future agenda items. Is there anything anybody wants to see on for next month that they know about already, other than the stuff we know we're bringing back with the downtown? We always, in August, also get a report of construction work in progress that's near schools and school zones, so we'll want that, to know where we're at with our projects. And if anybody thinks of anything in the meantime, let me know, otherwise we'll likely have a full agenda. Deb?
It just happens, I had looked at the, the city email just before coming, and we did have some concerns about all of the work being done by the-
TDS.
TDS by Matt Kaiser, and I don't know what, Matt was a former alderperson, wasn't he?
Yep.
And I'm not sure of his other talents, but it, it sounds like there's a lot of repairs that need to be made, and I don't know if it's something that we can go back and, and go in more detail about what needs to be done.
I think that's something we need to look at in general, too, is street privilege permits, because that's what they have when they open the street like that, and then they're, same thing when plumbers open up the street, and then they leave the hole sit forever, and they have to get back after them to repave that and whatever. So I think that's kind of where Matt's questions are, is they've repaired a number of openings with sub, substandard, you know, discount-type cold mix material and not hot mix and a roller.
Right, we, we work in with TDS, so we, TDS was a huge project, I mean, they board our every street in the city of Wausau for the last three years, so it's been a huge undertaking, you know, to try and keep track of them. There may be some holes out there that are in need of repair. We've been working with TDS. They do have a contractor who is out doing permanent repairs on a daily basis, so if there are some of them we've missed, they will be required to go back. I, I did, we do have an inspector who's working, you know, part-time on, not, he doesn't work part-time, but part, if his job responsibilities are to track TDS's, and TDS does have an engineer hired that tracks them, so we are, you know, I think Matt, or Mr. Kaiser was a little bit frustrated, but we are tracking their progress and what holes they have, and they, they will be repaired to the standard that engineering requires.
Okay, because if we find that the material that they fill them with, and that goes true for plumbers as well, if we find that the material they use is subpar and that that stuff is sinking and not holding up like normal pavement should, then we need to be after that, so.
And just to be aware, TDS, you know, they did, they do have a, a three-year bond on this work that's going on now, and, and they will be obviously in town forever, they have millions of dollars of infrastructure, so it's not like they're leaving. If something is wrong, we, you know, we have a-
We can compel the fix.
We can, we can compel them to fix it. They're going to be looking for plenty more permits in the future, so I would say that they started out pretty rough when they came to the city, but this last year or so, working with TDS Engineering, we have developed a pretty good relationship, where I'm confident we can fix what needs to be fixed, if there are deficiencies.
That's good. Okay, so then you guys can work with them without separate committee action, so in the meantime, if we get reports from anybody or find out that something's wrong, refer those residents to engineering so that they can be aware of where the problems are, and then they can get with TDS and make them do those fixes, so.
I did also have the questions about the Stewart Avenue Parkway. I don't know if it's something that you're hoping will be resolved one way or the other in the next month or so, or-
Is that something that you want to do outside the setting, or you want to put it on for next month, or?
No, I can just give you a quick update on that. I mean, we, we are working with the contractor, the mound areas do have weeds, they're aware of that, the contractor has met with engineering, and we are, we are holding their, a significant portion of that contract from them, so they are compelled to get that work completed, and they have, as of the beginning of this week, they committed they would get that done in the next two weeks. Their plan now, I believe, TJ, is to kill off all the grass on those mounds, rework it and reseed those, entirely reseed, and the advantage to that is irrigation is now working out there. I think when they initially put it in, there wasn't irrigation, now that there is irrigation, when they reseed it, we should get a, a better growth.
Okay. All right, so we'll keep on track of, on, on top of that as well, for the status, so, Deb?
And just driving around and seeing more streets that are really in bad shape, is it something as a committee that we want to potentially put together a list for, you know, putting a new layer on from other streets where the roads are in bad condition with, with the Biden Administration American Rescue Plan funds?
Well, if, what, that's one thing we have to look at, as far as what we can, I, I believe that we were told that we can't use rescue plan on streets, but if their infrastructure plan passes that's circulating right now, that may be a possibility, but they've not voted on that yet. I think they were planning to take that up as part of a reconciliation bill soon here.
Okay.
So if that happens, we'll certainly have an eye on, we, we all know how we want to spend that money, so.
Well, I, I guess timing-wise, if we've already done the streets that we had planned on, and so we're kind of have this time until fall, are we better to maybe have a, look at some other alternatives that we may-
Right.
Want to do this year if we can-
Right.
With the funding.
I think that we, in anticipation of maybe an increase in aids or whatever, Alan and TJ have kind of a backup list in the pocket of stuff that could go, so I'm, so I, right now, we're under future agenda items, so if we're good with the list that they have, we wouldn't need to put that on for next month.
I think we're having too much discussion, you know, off the-
Correct, well, we're trying to decide if we're going to put anything on or not, so I, I think we're good with not, if they're already on top of the stuff, so, okay. All right, so we won't, we'll, we'll bring back the item from today, and then we'll get that report also on construction in school zones. Motion to adjourn? Motion to adjourn by Wadinsky, is there a second? Second by Neil. Members in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, adjourned, or opposed, no one ever is, we'll stand adjourned. Thanks, everyone.